And the Adrian. Oh, sorry. That was where we're going. It is five thirty and at this time we will begin the Adrian City Commission work study session for April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty three. Roll call please.
Mayor Hee.
Present.
Mr. How.
President.
Mr. Robert.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
President.
Mr. Schrayer.
President.
Mr. Catherine Berry.
Present.
Mr. Gallow.
Present.
All commission members present.
At this time I will turn it over to City Administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item tonight is our zoning ordinance rewrite. We've talked about this in the past, but we have a proposal that should have been in your packet from Smith Group. We have the opportunity to have a financial support for this effort from the Redevel the Ready Communities Program, given our recent achievement of essentials status with them. They have funding available to the two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. That's not going to cover the entire cost, but I did budget in next year's fiscal your budget for this. There are a number of tasks related to implementing the new comprehensive plan, but then also just bringing our ordinance in the line with a good practice and modern way of thinking. It's quite outdated and internally conflicting in a number of ways and I think it makes sense to just kind of scrap what we have and start fresh and that's what the proposal does. Allison Bishop from Smith Group is online with us tonight. I thought I would turn it over to her and let her walk very briefly through the proposal that was submitted so you get a sun for this. The idea that we would is that we would bring back a resolution next time if the commission is in accord so that we can get this project going. Allison, can you hear me?
Yep, yep. Can you all hear me as okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. Allison Bishop with Smith Group. I'm joined with Rachel Smith, who's also from Smith Group. We'll be working together on the zoning ordinance. If you choose to move forward, the way that we have presented it is that we will start the process with holding a kickoff meeting with with a steering committee and then making sure that we understand the goals and objectives of of the city for the future of the zoning ordinance and in relation to your comprehensive plan. So then we would start to go through and an audit of your existing plan, making sure that we understand some of the things that you want to change. We know that we've talked to Greg and Jeremiah on the phone and know that the parking ordinance needs some significant rewrite, that there's an interest in doing some form based code implementation and then also taking a look at your downtown and maybe some of your architectural and signage standards. So we would just kind of go through and look at what those are today and what they could be in the future and provide some recommendations. Throughout the process, we would meet with that steering committee to make sure that we're headed down the right path. Then we would start to develop a outline for what that ordinance might look like, making sure that we're headed down the right path before we continue to develop the ordinance language. And then once the the draft is developed, we would sit down with the members of your development community, those that are are most familiar with the zoning ordinance. They're the ones that have to abide by the rules. So kind of get a little bit of a feedback back and forth to make sure that that everything is is can be understood. Then we would provide a draft ordinance for review and then follow that up with an adoption by the city council. So if there's any questions.
We also want to address and we've got to address too is policy on accessory blowing units, which is something that's indicated in the comprehensive plan, which would be important, I think, going forward with our housing prices that we have here in town and see how it'll be part of our effort as well. It goes to be enough to to address that and have some features for allowing those going forward. Thank you, Allison. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Smith Group?
I just want to be sure I'm understanding. Allison mentioned a couple of different ordinances, but then you mentioned essentially a complete overhaul. So they, this is covering a complete audit review, not just particular.
Right. Take the whole zoning ordinance and replace it with a new, more modern.
And how will that affect anyone that has gone through planning commission review, but hasn't gotten to the votes against yet?
Well, they're really. I mean, there's that's rarely the case. We don't tend to table much with the planning commission. If it goes to the planning commission, it's ready for action or not. So there's not projects pending on the table with planning commission like that. I don't see that as a significant issue. Anybody who has approval, that approval is good for whatever the term of that approval is usually a year under the current terms.
I would quickly be doing the the final deliverable is quite a ways out, a year maybe.
Usually this takes quite a while to accomplish. Allison, did you have a sense of how long the project will take?
Included in the proposal, we were proposing to start at the end of this summer and then wrapping up next May. So May of two thousand and twenty-four would be the probably around the time that adoption would be proposed to city council. If things progress as kind of how we were planned, but that could be accelerated or, you know, depending on some of the feedback and the revisions and but generally speaking, it was going to, we were proposing it take about a year.
Right. Other questions? Any concerns with going ahead with the doctor? Remember that because this is the RRC approved consultant processes that we, there's only three that we can approach. We approach the one we want to approach. They're right to proposal and RRC will support that once you know, contact with them. Well, not like a put out for bid kind of thing. There's limited number. There's only three consultants that are available for this work. God through RRC. We selected Smith Group because of our relationship.
Will this also adjust like downtown signage? They know you guys talked about that.
Yes, that's included in the in the zoning ordinance and that'll be included. All right. Well, I don't think there's any other questions. Thank you, Allison and Rachel for jumping on and our getting you going.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Number two, we have some preparation. Dr. Davies here to talk about pool and special event fees.
Good evening, everybody. What you have in front of you is this packet of some potential, some proposed rates and kind of give you some updates. We had talked before some months back. One of the things we covered tonight was the usage of Heritage Park. One of the things that we're seeing is the fantastic resurgence of people coming back to the parks open book and really starting to see what we have to offer. And then I always like to leave the line that, you know, Heritage Park kind of is our flagship park. It's obviously it's the size of it and so much that's there. So we're going to touch on that, but also what I want to talk about first, the bone pool. In the past, bone pool has always been for a long times operated by the YMCA and due to some unforeseen circumstances with them, about a month ago, I got a call saying they weren't in position to operate. And while it was short notice, I immediately jumped on it, talked with Greg, be assumed the role and as we're moving forward, soon talking about the the bone pool and where it's going, I thought of creating that we begin, start to bring some of these things back in house to really give us a baseline to see the cost, how these things operate and to really be able to kind of control and, you know, provide services to our residents. And so starting this year, we are going to take over bone pool. So what you have in front of you, these were the current rates from last year. And I don't foresee any reason why we need to increase these rates. One of the things though that is different is you see last year, the rate for city resident, it was for city resident and or YMCA member. Right? And that's understandable. They were operating it. However, they are not. So one of the things that I thought as we're strengthening and building our relationship with the school district and our kids in the school district, in my opinion, just proposes and all this idea out there that that rate just simply switches from city resident and or YMCA member to city resident and or APS student or family. You know, again, strengthening that bond and that relationship with the school district and recreation that's just exploding. So that's will be up to you guys. But again, you see, these are the same rates as last summer. And again, you know, our, we're not trying to price, you know, our students or our families. You know, last summer, I had another question to see kids that I do working in the school district, having a ton of fun. And I believe these prices do allow some pretty easy access to bone pool. So want to throw this out there and if you guys have thoughts on pricing or how we're going to run things, feel free to, you know, offer that up. Just an addition to that, we've hired a pool manager, Robert Peck is a longtime swim coach, YMCA lifeguard instructor has come on. So we are currently in the process of hiring lifeguards right now. Also nailing down our membership system. So we're developing or getting a software that's going to allow us to track memberships, inventory in regards to concession stand and all that. And then again, a good thing about this is it's going to give us kind of a baseline here to see here's the cost, here's revenue, kind of put us and show us where we're at in regards to that. So right now we have ten lifeguards on board. Hopefully we'll have about four or five more fairly shortly. We're working on that right now with HR and myself and City Schmucker, my office manager helping out. So we're nailing that down. Proposed opening would be Saturday, June second. That's right after the the school district closes and Sunday, August twentieth would be closure. I know that seems early, however, that's been roughly the same in the past and that is due to simply lifeguards are usually a high school athletes that go back to go back to their sports training roughly early August and or college students who by August twentieth are bouncing. And so so that's our tentative dates. Again, leave that up to you guys if you're okay with that. But in regards to bone pool and any of this, does anybody have any question for? Yes.
Um. Do so, I mean, make sure APS students and or family. So if a kindergarten or APS student, okay, within time is that the whole family gets that?
Yes. Because most of, yes, because most of those situations, obviously these so you're usually seeing older siblings and or parents or guardians.
Um. How do we? Then how do the schools, don't worry, just a hot set. So how do we verify anyone doesn't?
So they can work cards, anything like that, or any registration paperwork that we can just verify. So that's how we would in regards to APS students.
And how long does the Y then managing the staff?
I want to say about fifteen years.
And that?
Any other questions about? We're going to move on here. That's that second sheet right here. This is just simply going over bone pool rentals. Talking with our staff, Greg and I and others. This was kind of a model that was set in place. We want to kind of agree with it. So you see there in the blue is this pool rental for pool rentals for after hours only. In my opinion, it's Friday. It's July. It's ninety degrees out. I'm not okay with shutting down our pool in the middle of the day for a private park, right? That's restricting access to our families and to our kids. And every day we have kids from all over the city on their bikes down at home pool. And a lot of them do have season passes. Right? So I, in my opinion, there's a conflict right there. And so in regards to renting bone pool for any special event, we'd like to do an after hours zone. So looking on the front, times for bone pool are one to six, Monday through Thursday, Friday, one to eight, and then Saturday and Sunday, one to six. Obviously in the summertime, it's still light out and warm up to ten o'clock. So I feel that provides ample time for special groups to come in and still have warm weather in the pool or whatever event it is after hours. Again, this avoids us restricting access to our kids or families that have seen the passes or again, it's July, it's ninety. I don't think it's right for me shutting the pool down. So this is the municipal city pool. This is what are privately. So so that's my suggestion. And the rates there that you simply see, that is simply based on the ratio of lifeguards, the swimmers. So we have large parties and we have to staff that. So that's simply where those rates come in. Again, these have been rates that the Y has established previously. They're actually quite low. If you look at other pools of other areas, this is an extremely low rate. Again, when I try to price folks out, it's just simply we need to cover our costs in regards to shut it, hold down it. We've got to keep lifeguards and staff. They're demanding it. So that's simply what those rates are. Again, those are rates that have been there for some time. That was through the YMCA.
Jeremiah. Yeah, I can read and I can hear what you're saying. If somebody wanted to have an event on a Saturday morning from nine to noon, would you entertain that?
Absolutely.
Just not during the hours.
I know. Correct. I'll clarify that. If you want to do something privately, I should have somebody reach out today. Mentioned it and they saw what I'm wanting. I said, that's something we can absolutely do. But again, during public pool hours, we wanted over. So we don't want restricted access.
Um, and can we get something on here that talks about how much time in advance to request a rental?
Yes.
I know that getting lifeguards for certain times of the day or evening is a challenge.
For sure. Absolutely.
Caroline?
Yes.
Obviously I have not been down to the pool a lot. There's no birds down here. That's why. You said that private parties and so like kind of, we have lights down there.
Yes, yes, we did once. And that was actually something that we did a review just in the past two weeks, really the eyes on sight of identifying any issues that we perceive or a couple of light bulbs off. But yes, we do. Obviously we'll be running before we.
And a few of these Tuesday times won't be operational because of wave runners home meets, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And those those wave.
That is still continuing. That's why.
Yeah. Wave runners only have one event this year that's home.
Really?
Yeah. So they're they're on the road.
I haven't been in in a while. My kids have been out for a while, but are we doing any sort of discounts for APS classes that walk down?
So usually every year, a couple of days prior to the actual public opening that last week of school roughly, there's a handful of APS classes that come down. And that's just always been free. The Y gave it to them free. And so it's just been a very small group. So I've actually sent out an email to Superintendent Parker last week talking about that. So if you guys deem it okay, I would think if we have a couple of small first and secondary classes down, we could offer a free to the school. And they usually do it for two to three hours, nothing too long. It's just to get the kids in there, introduce them to it and then get them back.
Sorry, fourth doesn't come down?
Actually, they did not. Got a couple from Lincoln and Lee. Next, what you have in front of you. Again, this is all ten stuff. Want to discuss this with you. It's the Heritage Park Trail Rental Group. And if you remember, you know, months ago, I was here and we had talked about again, people are coming back to the parks again, Heritage Park, you know, being our flagship park. We've been now confronted with a couple of situations where this kind of started a handful of years ago. A mountain biking group here in Michigan reached out or five hundred riders in year one. This past year, they went two days for six hundred riders, right? And I wanted just to give you brief history because this was kind of before I started. Jason, are you on?
Yes, good evening.
Yeah, Jason, just real quickly, you just want to kind of just give the commission update of kind of where this derived from and how we got to this point, especially since it started with you before I got here in regards to to the mountain biking group.
Yep, I'll try to be quick here. Back in December of two thousand and twenty, we were contacted by a representative from Miska, Michigan Interscholastic Cycling Association, inquiring about Heritage Park to have a youth competitive trail bike event. They had heard and I actually rode to some of our trails, heard about heritage and what a, in their words, hidden gem that it was, inquired about renting it out on twenty twenty-one for a one day event. We talked and negotiated a price because they needed to close some of the trails and access roads for rider participant safety. We did that. They liked it so much in twenty twenty-one. In their words, they said it was the best supported venue that they've been to in the state. In twenty twenty-two, they inquired about renting two days. We did that last year for a two day event. And this year they're wanting to coordinate around Santa Heights and Adrian College Homecoming Games. So they can accommodate as much as they can with hotel space in the city of Adrian. And once again, we are hoping to completely pricing being structured that's favorable to them. They've been very, very accommodable, very working with us, have no issues with what we've negotiated in the past for rental fees, but it does restrict use to the park for the days that they are there. And it doesn't restrict use coming into the park by any means. It just restricts use of those trails. And so they're very understanding. They have no problem with that. Like I said, they like it so much. They want to make it their championship event this year sometime in September, if we can work around like it's the homecomings of Santa Heights and Adrian College to make sure there's potentially enough hotel space for the participants.
Perfect. Thank you, Jason. So what you have in front of you on that sheet right there is a small box and now mind you, there isn't a whole lot of trail systems like ours locally, right? That's one of the benefits that we have, you know, living in Adrian and surrounding areas is that, you know, a fantastic park with those trails. So we really started looking surrounding areas and tried to find some areas that has some compare comparables in regards to Heritage Park and the types of trails that could be used, you know, for races, mountain biking, all those types of things. And what we've kind of developed with our trail system, if you see that we came up with the tiered system. Tier one, zero to one miles. So essentially if you're familiar with Heritage Park, that's the blue trail. It's a little loop about point eight miles just shy of a of a mile. And so what you have on there then, if somebody wanted to come out and put on a little tiny fun walk or whatever it may be. And they want to use it for less than two hours, you're kind of doing this in four hours. A resident can rent it for seventy-five dollars, a non-resident one hundred twenty-five. Or if they are going four hours, which essentially it's a full day at that point, the resident rate will be a hundred twenty-five dollars and a non-resident one hundred fifty. And then it moves down to tier two, one to three miles. That would be the red horse. Obviously I can run that a little bit. It's two point eight miles. So again, here's proposed rates, hundred twenty-five dollars for less than four hours, one seventy-five. Non-resident rate, then obviously the four plus hours after that. So that goes down to tier three, three miles or greater. Essentially you're getting on the orange course. That literally goes through all the other colored particular trails. You have the yellow, red, green and those. And so that's and so again, that Jason talked about, this is really where those fees, that five hundred dollars really kind of came from. When they started this, this was kind of a negotiated price, saying, okay, you're taking up this amount of the park. Again, they're restricting access. And so that's where this has come. We want people in our parks. However, if we're going to restrict access for any amount of time, it is there has to be. So that's where this tentatively has come. Yes, ma'am.
So Adrian High School across country, I know it uses that for a home meet. Are you, do they get charged as well?
No, that's kind of the part of it. It's always been there. Yep. And they're very good actually in their their course doesn't really it gets into the trails a little bit, but it's it's so minor. They really kind of figure stuff like that. And that's kind of midday. They do those. There's really not a whole lot of folks out there. Again, if you broadcast that, there is signage and things are there is. And those high school races last about twenty-five. So it'd be about thirty-five.
Jeremiah, I've got a question on the piece. When you go from four hours to a full day, it appears that in at least some cases, like with tier one, the residents going from four hours to a full day, their cost increase is fifty dollars where the non-residents, it only goes up twenty-five dollars. And it looks like throughout that there's a higher percentage of an increase for residents than for non-residents.
We could adjust that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that residents aren't
For sure.
being taken advantage of.
No, for sure.
Jeremiah. This wouldn't affect the disc golf people, would it?
So actually we have disc golf on the next page.
Okay. Well, I mean, no, I mean, if somebody were to say use the course for four hours, I mean, the the bike trails and running trails don't intersect so much with disco. So they rented bike trails, you can still play disco.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And then also a lot of times depending on who's out there taking part on the running or biking courses, they mark those courses. I mean, it's, they're all marked red, yellow, green, but they'll come in and they'll tie ribbons or whatever on certain trees. Can we make sure that they clean them up before they leave? Because they don't always do it.
Yeah. And that'll be part of the part of a run. But Commissioner Gaus, to your point, increase that and send it to us. I agree.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, if I was going to ask this question, the changes are high. To go from tier three, a hundred and seventy-five and two twenty-five, five hundred and five twenty-five. Can't quite figure out how we got.
So that big jump, honestly, it became, this really kind of derived from that race a couple of years ago, simply because essentially that's that mountain biking event essentially took up the almost the entire trail system. So it was literally restricting access for the entire day. So due to the number of participants, it was just kind of a negotiated rate, three to again, that was just kind of our opinion that, hey, if you're going to take up the trail system for the entire day, so you're you're shutting it down to all residents that there has to be some sort of substantial fee there. So that's where kind of that five hundred dollar, five twenty-five simply because they were shutting the entire thing. Again, these are just proposed and I will go back and adjust some provision. I will move on. The disc golf course. As you saw in my my buddy requests your approval would be of money to put new disc golf baskets in, which has made the disc golf users extremely happy. There is a large contingent group of disc golfers who are stewards of the park. And as I've got to know them over the last year and a half, they do a lot of just minor little things when they're out of the trail. They pick up trash, right? They move stakes, they do this kind of stuff. Simply because that is such a such a large part, movemental staffing out there. And so once they get back into the weeds, they really have done some stuff and they're big proponents of it. But again, it's a fantastic course because I've got to learn about disc golf for the last year and a half. Due to our staff and the work they've done out there, as well as local disc golf users, we're seeing an influx of people coming out to Heritage Park. We're seeing an influx of people coming out to Heritage Park, go online. And there's a number of disc golf sites that talk about Heritage Park and the course. And talk about how fantastic it is. I read the reviews and kind of go through those things. Just so I kind of have an idea of what others are thinking of our course. And it's nothing but positive things. And with that, that is likely to obviously increase of usage. There's a couple of local groups wanting to put on events, right? And so currently, we don't have anything in place. And so what we wanted to go through is there's essentially two things here. One is that they, there's some, there's some evening leagues that they do. It's local folks out there playing. And one of the things that we want to do here. That second little group where it says type of use, where you see league. What this is, it's still open to the public. It's still, this is their way of kind of getting competitive. A little bit, they want to keep track of scores and things of that nature. And so they're never really restricting access. Still open to the public. People can come through and play at any time. However, they, in the past, they have received donations and they, those donations were used to put into Heritage Park. Again, this is well before us. This has been years ago. This had happened. And through conversations, they had asked, how can we kind of bring support? And also when I came on and reached out to them, I said, you know, I see you guys are doing stuff. However, let's bring it together, bring it under the umbrella of the city. Because again, that is our, our part and our taxpayers. Want to be able to use those things. And so what we would like to propose, simply for a league night, and that's going through my office, is a donation. And simply what that donation would be, you see there are rental rates of two dollars per person, and they usually do this anyways, and five dollars for a non-resident. And what essentially that would do, that donation, we've put in account and turn around and put that money right back into the agent. So that's them wanting to be good stewards, them being appreciative of what we're doing, bringing new baskets and as we you know, the years come, continue to bring a little bit more resources. It's really made that a much more even beautiful course than it already is. And so this is kind of looked around to some other disc golf courses. This is much cheaper right here. Again, not trying to price folks out and just getting a feel and talking with these groups. They're like, absolutely, absolutely. We'll pay this. We'd want the money to go back into the course. So they're big proponents. Again, they're the good stewards of the park. With that, we get into tournaments. Again, it's growing, it's expanding. There's currently, I call the old school guys, the new school guys. I didn't add it to the school course. So I'm able to bring everybody together to the table to kind of get on the same page. But what they would like to do is start hosting tournaments. Right? And so then what we get into again is fantastic. You want to host a tournament, but if you do that, we're getting into the situation where you're restricting access to the public. And so what we would like to do, this is very comparable to surrounding surrounding courses in our area. If you want to reserve and run a little tournament out of Heritage Park. Hundred dollars minimum to reserve the course. And or five, and then five dollars a person, right? And these tournaments go quick. They're not, it's not one of those situations where the park, in particular, the court is shut down for the entirety of the day. Guys throw, boom, they're off and moving. And so these go really quickly. But again, however, for that short amount of time, there is restricted access. So again, this is where we believe that, okay, if you're going to restrict access, there needs to be a charge. And so that's what we have here. We're also requirement, just so, you know, they're not fidget numbers. We're asking for a tournament day roster. That way we can ensure we're receiving payment from every single person that is participating. And again, this is very comparable to surrounding areas. So that's what I kind of want to get your feedback and ideas and thoughts on. Obviously, you approve of the rates. If this is your dragon, but does anybody have any questions in regards to disco?
No, but I know a lot of people that love the course and talk about it all the time, and they've been wanting to see something like this where they can have a league and or have a tournament. I know several people that had brought this up personally. So I know they're really happy to see them.
Going to get brought these kind of groups together and, and I communicated with them, hey, we're not trying to take over, we're not trying to push you out, simply want to, let's get a little bit more organized, run it through our office, I'll help you promote it. And then with that way, you know, down the road, we can bring resources, you know, budget items and things like that. They were all for it, you know, and so it also allows me to address with anything, there's certain activity, things that go on. And so we've kind of said, hey, if they're going to be in a city park doing this, then we're not going to allow them certain things to go on. In agreements and not saying that they're doing anything wrong, but there's sometimes little things that popped up. And so this is allowing me to kind of have some oversight on what's going on. So.
And maybe even just advertise this like over to, like to communicate that even to the colleges. Because I know when I used to work at Sienna, that there was quite a few that were moving the disc golf all the time out there. And they were talking about it and like trying to do a league and things like that. So maybe to make sure that communications are, because the, that age group especially is really into disco.
Yeah. And one of the others are the gentleman named Blake Holbing. He's a, I call him part of the new group. He actually designed the, the disco course at Sienna as well as the, the old training school property out there. So he's been vital coming in and kind of bringing me up to speed on, on the disc golf scene, as well as some of the other guys who have been out there for twenty, twenty five years. So again, we got them in a room, pop things out. How do we make this better? What can I do to help you? And so they've been just on board with this. And so again, this is just kind of tightening a few things up and addressing a few things that haven't been there before. And again, this is so back to, we're going to restrict access to our residents. Then there needs to be a fee there. So that's kind of what we've come up with. So wanted to bring that to you guys tonight to talk about. Any other questions?
Yeah, looking forward to the future. Do you anticipate that our pickleball aficionados are going to want to have events on pickleball courts?
Yes.
Would we have something similar for that?
Absolutely. Actually, I'm a part of the Southeastern Michigan Pickleball Forum. And so I've actually been talking with them. So once we, once we pick the ball courts up this summer, before we open it, I will be back probably in six to eight weeks to see you guys again with some proposed ideas on how we'll handle the huge pickleball courts in regards to tournaments. And I just mentioned it and I've had it blew on people like, God, we can't wait to come down to Adrian and use this. So yes, we will have something set up for how we're going to run tournaments and all that stuff. So I'm deciding so.
You've already bought your pickleball panels?
You're asking me or?
Well, I will say like, gals is a lot quicker, it's simple math. As long as the percentages get, the city resident, non-city resident. I mean, everything else, my opinion looks good, but you want to make sure the percentage are consistent. So.
Definitely. I will adjust those and I'll send them to you. Right.
Comments. So the first one is with where it's the, and this is just a minor editing thing. I don't know how many leagues or tournaments would fit their name in that kind of mistakes. And also Blake happens to be my neighbor and I've talked to him quite a bit. And although he's an insurance agent. And you probably know, and I could talk to him about it too, the liability insurance for this golf. I know we need to have it. Is that, is that going to be restricted for anyone to do it for an event or to rent it? If we're only charging two dollars per person, the average deposit of two hundred dollars, is that? I know we have that on the other ones and the same insurance amount of a million dollars. Is that, is that a requirement? And should we look at those requirements to be brought down and in line with our fees for that?
Absolutely. So just to give you kind of an idea of that million dollar policy. You can roughly get it from anywhere from about a hundred thirty dollars to a hundred sixty dollars. So that's what it costs. And that's kind of, again, that's kind of, the precedent has been set previously with a lot of different events having that million dollar. However, you know, if you all would like to see that come down, I don't see an issue with that. From a liability standpoint. You don't see a whole lot of injuries or things happening with people playing disco. That could be more than, we can drop that down.
For that, Mr. Galway, his opinion.
I would strongly recommend keeping a minimum policy of insurance of at least one million dollars for any tournament of any kind. The city of Adrian has on its properties. Those policies are extremely cheap these days. Market's good. And while there may not be many issues, that's good. That'll keep the price of the policies down. It's very good protection, not only to the commission, but for the employees and others who may get there. I strongly recommend. City should be named as an additional George, I mean, policy.
All right. Well, thank you. I will make these changes. I'll give them to Greg and allow them to communicate.
Good work, Jeremiah.
Hey, that's up. We can have made a reprieze of the Church Street lot. She has access to city property. Then that guy is here, I believe, with the owners of the property to the east. On the shelf, we could get the map up on the screen for everybody to see and then pass it out again. You still have it from last time. It hasn't changed, but right now. So it'll be up there in a minute. But now, since it's a half acre lot. It is not contiguous to any other city owned properties. It's about fifty feet wide. That'll explain to you the situation with property to the east. But essentially, it does not have its own driveway. And as I understand it, it's a difficulty getting in and out tenants to the parking area in the rear. I will say a couple of considerations. We did sell other land out here not that long ago, maybe three years ago roughly. Steve Rosales, that was much larger property, probably about three times as wide as this was improved with the parking lot. We sold that for twelve thousand dollars to him. There is an expense to owning this property. We have to mow it. We have to shovel a little bit of sidewalk in front every year. So you know, a lot like this, that's not contiguous with anything else. There's not a great benefit for the city to own again.
Why do we own that?
There was an effort back in the day to assemble lands in this area. It was well before my time, but as I understand it, for a convention center, that was envisioned, honestly, I got that. And so I assume this was acquired as part of that attempt at a land assembly back then. And then you want to talk about it here?
Before you ask that. I assume that this is not currently on the tax rolls and it could become on the, it wouldn't mount to much, but.
Yeah, you know, since we don't rent it to anybody, it's not on the
Which is right.
And you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I just want to point out. And what the challenge has been.
Yeah. How do you get cars back there? I'm very curious because I drove by and saw their word cards and don't know how they even got there.
So what has to happen now currently is folks have to park here, which is actually Steve's. I don't know. There's an agreement that my parents have with Steve Rosales, mainly for you. And so folks have to go and traverse a couple of backyards to get to the building. And or they have to come across the back and over. This property is owned by somebody else. And then come across literally onto their property, onto the city property to get to the apartment. Which restricts really the ability for the apostolic church, my parents, to be able to have rental the two apartments that are in there right now. It's always been a challenge for them. Really becomes one of those opportunities where it's a last ditch effort for folks. I remember living there many years ago when Kenny and I lived there, our very first apartment and having the parking space right out in the front building. There were a place for two cars. We no longer have that since we've organized all of our streets. So it's been a, an opportunity for us, a challenge to get regular renters. They're a very short time. They get tired of walking. They have a winter, you can imagine, and we traverse other backyards to get to that, that building. And so I asked would be to have us buy it, take it off your, take it off your rolls. And at the moment anymore, that'll be his job.
I will caution you, one thing, I don't know what the answer to this question is, but that is the state road. Church Street in that location, it's part of the business route. And so I am not, would have to approve the driveway.
Yeah, I think for that property. If we go from here to here, right? But I believe the easeway, correct? To go from the back here into the property. I'm not aware of that. And I think when you and I talked last, it was an impression I was left with, was that this will be a challenge.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, that's privately owned. We don't own the property to the west.
Well, I'll do my due diligence and find out because my understanding is that all this is owned by the folks that own it. It begins itself for at least an opportunity to drive from that street into that lot, at least two to three, maybe three vehicles.
Okay, well, yeah. But no, I appreciate knowing that. It's something to look into. But put it on the agenda tonight so you can have a discussion with the commissioners about what you're willing to offer and whether that's something they would consider.
Thank you.
And so I think your proposed price was
Seven hundred dollars, yeah.
Throw that out to you, commissioners for discussion.
How much is the cost if you're here to maintain?
Well, I don't know exactly.
And I guess the question would be, we, you know, we have another willing buyer who wants to come up forward and offer something. And why would they want?
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's nominally a buildable lot, right? It's same width as the property next door. And so theoretically, you could have a structure built on it.
But MDOT will still have to approve access.
Yes, from Church Street. Yes, from Church Street. No, I mean, it's not. In my experience with MDOT, you don't have a driveway and that's how, that's the access to your property, they will usually approve that. Not suggesting it's not something that they will do, but not within our control to
Selling that property to me, I think they built wouldn't let, where anybody could put a driveway though, wouldn't they? If you, if you built something next to that structure, it would limit anybody getting one.
Well, you can see photos now of any more of that. The house that's parents own, church own is roughly the width of the lot. And that's why they don't have a lot. So the kind of structure that could be built there still afford access and would be minimal.
And you said B three, two forty seven, because I have from the last meeting. So I, I have my diagram here. So it's not attached to any other city owned property. So it pretty much be that point five, seven acre lot is what we, if we didn't sell it, we can market it as a development potentially.
Well, I mean, I remain, it's not. It, it has very limited utility to anyone that owns it.
Right. Well, then I would say my position is dump it. I mean, it's all those things where it's like, you know, do you have any interest around it? And adjacent to it? And if you don't, you know, I love getting rid of city owned property as long as it makes sense for us. But yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all. Because I'm looking at it right now. It's like, there's, it's like landlocked right now for, for, and that development is, and that piece property is very small. So.
So thin.
Yeah.
When you first brought it up, I thought it was like over through the gardens. And then when I found out it was only that little sliver, it's so thin.
When you first brought it up, I thought it was like over through the gardens, and then when I found out it was only that little sliver, it's so thin.
Now, we had people knocking on the door, wanting, well, that's a different discussion, but I didn't even know we owned that. I asked the question of why we own it then. I remember the convention center, like on Pearl Street, there was some, there was some plan back when Lad and I first got about a, uh. Portable housing unit, you know, and, and, and that kind of didn't get funded and whatnot, so. Um, but yeah, I don't, I don't have any concern with that. I'm, I'm comfortable with dumping that.
Do you want to get with me then, uh, try to get a. Purchase agreement together?
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Is there any further comment needed from us? Thank you all very much. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thanks for coming. Be back.
Uh, last but not least, uh, we have an update from our Main Street Director.
Good evening. Uh, thanks for letting me speak. I wanted to. Been talking to our, to our chairman of board, wanted to come out and speak. It's all, I'm approaching a year on the job. And I wanted to kind of give you an update of where we are and what we're working on to kind of give you an idea of the things we've been doing. Um, becoming a Main Street committee just recently, we've, uh, we've engaged all four of the committees that Main Street requires from us. And so we're starting to see great traction from those committees moving forward. Um, volunteers, we started to get great traction from volunteers just recently for a private fifteen Adrian College students down here helping us, so that's a. That's great in a couple of aspects. One, getting that volunteer support with two St. Adrian College students down here downtown, really helping us out quite a bit. Um, personally, I've been doing quite a bit of training. I just got back a couple of weeks ago from Boston at the National Main Street Convention. Where there were nineteen hundred attendees there, and we shared a lot of stories, learned about the aspiring, you know, the growing community, what they're doing. And some, and they will bring some things back. Went to a, uh, went to a conference in Lansing last October. It was a storytelling conference and we're gonna receive that coming up this summer. Um, we were doing grant writing as well as kind of, you know, grant administration, then a four week series that we've been following up the last classes tomorrow. And then a real estate class that's been going on, talking about how we can help with real estate development, and that's gonna culminate with a training in Mylan, uh, May ninth. So some of our board members will be attending that with us, with, with me as well to, to understand real estate development and different aspects of it. We're also gonna, we're, we're also working with M E D C to host, uh, an aspiring developer program here at the Armory later on this summer, so we'll see that too. Really kind of get people, get the education to them, and get them involved in, in what's going on in my community. Um, some big things that are coming up, uh, technical services, there are no costs to us. And so we've got a, we're engaged right now in a branding technical service. And so you're gonna see a new logo, the communication information, all of those things, and we're gonna get the first view of that. Wednesday morning, eight o'clock at a special meeting, the D E A is happening. Brain Consultant is gonna present that to us. And, uh, Ben Moldrow from, uh, Moldrow Associates, or, or not Moldrow Associates. You guys are really, really on the game and provide some great information to it. Um, things that there'll be things in there like social media, how to really manage that and what that looks like for us going forward, and really. Really two-pronged focus. One, the identity of the D E A and what that is, and then the district as a whole. You know, so we look at promoting that entire district and bringing people to the district. Um, communication training, we had one class last Monday. Um, there'll be another one a little bit later this summer, and that's really communicate to the five key stakeholders that they find. Building owners, businesses, uh, government, public as a whole, and then our D E A group as well. Uh, so really looking at those, communicate how we communicate to them, what we share with them, and how we voice that message to each different stakeholder. Um, as I mentioned, storytelling, there's a company, or there's a consultant in his company called Storyville. They're gonna be coming in June to do interviews with some of our key stakeholders. And really help us tell their story, tell the story of downtown, tell the story of people that helped guide us there, and, and really share a community that's done with. Probably fifteen of the mainstream communities in Michigan so far, and it's great. It's passed out through social media. Um, it, it comes from the perspective of that stakeholder as opposed to the community itself, and so they're really riveting and really eye catching. Um, a big update, events. You know, events has been on everybody's mind over the past few. We have, uh, I've been working with Greg to get new application. Um, so we brought the application, updated. We've got, uh, work for trucks are allowable, got a map for that. We've got, um, the event evaluation form provided by Michigan Main Street, so everyone can use that, and that's been. Shared with all of the, the groups that are having upcoming events. Um, we do have our first event at the Pavilion, which will be May sixth, the Cinco de Mayo event that's coming in, so we've, we've got one gig already. We're looking to have more. Uh, just a couple of quick things left. Mural, uh, while I was in Boston, the event had several classes on murals. What that program looks like, some work plans to help you get those executed, and handle some of the legal stuff behind the scenes. And so I'm developing that work plan and hope to have something that we can launch at our delicious, maybe the first mural there. And really continue somewhat like, uh, Jackson did with Brian Walls. There's a lot of opportunity spaces in downtown. I think it'd be great to engage our community and our residents as well. And then, uh, last thing, been exploring some historic preservation opportunities for downtown. Um, I think that will come into contact with me starting writing, pre-writing your answers was on here. Um, I think there's some great opportunities we haven't capitalized, because we haven't been asked to. Learned a lot about historic preservation and having street conferences as well. Happy to answer any questions.
That's that, when's that meeting with Ben Moldrow?
Uh, Wednesday morning, eight AM. It'll be here and then it'll be available, presumably as normal, because it'll be a, uh, a weekend game.
Uh, and to echo what, what Jay said, I was at the D E A meeting last week and Ben made a presentation on. The whole rebranding effort. It was great. He's, he, he was really, really good. So it's a good place to better our efforts.
Thank you.
Uh, any other topics we want to dig up tonight?
Well, I just have something, um, about, I know next pre-meeting, we're gonna be meeting with, um, H R C. And going over, so I just, I pulled up, um, you know, it's on the website, but I'm a person that likes to be able to read and paper, and I don't like everything on a computer all the time. So I just printed up exactly like what their mission statement, the goals and objectives that are on the website. So that you can, you know, just keep that, like, think about this as we come into, so I did it for everyone, just to, you know, pass that one down. So as we come into, um, that meeting, that pre-meeting next week. Um, just to really, I mean, not next week, in a couple of weeks, just to really think about and, um. And, and, and have that play into that meeting as well, just to have that fresh in your mind. To review the. Ordinance on this. Yeah, but that's not what this is. Right, does it? Right. This is just what the website says, like, this is what their literature says, like, that it is handed out, and this is like, if you go to. Human Relations Commission on our city website, that's what this is from. And so that's why I'm saying to compare that to the ordinance, because remember how, um, Greg passed out the ordinance last week? That way you can compare it and, and start to look at that as, as we prepare for that meeting with them, um, in a couple of weeks.
Mayor, how do you envision that meeting goes next meeting? When it comes to flow, what are we trying to accomplish? Cause I know, I would like to see contests, but what are you envisioning? Cause you are on the H R C. What do you, what do you envision? The process and, and, and getting us together and coming up with a plan. What do you, you know, have you thought about that yet, or?
No, I, I really think though that they, I mean, I, I think there's agreements definitely across the board that the ordinance. Definitely needs to be looked at. I, I would say that is a, uh, general consensus from everyone on the ordinance. I knew that that is something that even like, as Locking was redoing the bylaws and they were looking at that. Um, they were finding funny things in there, and that, that even referred back into the ordinance, and they're like, these, these don't, these don't exist anymore. Or, or this, this just needs to be rewritten. I know when there was a complaint that was brought to us. By somebody from out of town, um, that had come here and, um. You know, when that happened, and it said right in our ordinance, like the, you know, how we talked about investigate, and they were like, we, why are we? And the ones invest, you know, that came up during that time, and how do we go about this, and it's in the ordinance, we have to do this, but we don't know. It was very, um, uh, you know, uncharted territory and, and a lot of questions being asked, and, and I know that there's. I know there's a strong feeling even within the H R C that that ordinance needs to definitely be looked at. Um, I know though that one thing, when we did our team building, um, and just really kind of trying to work towards. Um, you know, what are we trying to accomplish within the H R C? That's, this is what we were looking at during that team building. Where the mission statement and the goals and objectives, and, um, just to refresh it. Yeah, everybody on the H R C as well, because sometimes we tend to forget what's written down, and that is what we were. You know, all looking at as we talk during that team building, exactly what you're looking at right there.
Yeah, the, um, proposed bylaws for the H R C been completed?
They have not been, um, they have not been executed yet, no.
Okay, the reason I have to, that wasn't our last meeting, unfortunately or unfortunately.
Yes.
Uh, but I did watch the video, and one of the things the lady Bernard brought up was our bylaws say twelve inches a year. And, but yeah, we don't have approved bylaws, so I don't know.
Well, we do, they're rewriting, and these are like, um, amended, like they're looking at, that's what is, and that is. So that's why this is actually really good timing, because these bylaws were literally just being reworked and looked at, because some of these things. Um, don't work with what, you know, or, or just aren't correct with what has been happening and, and like where. They probably should be, and like the word investigate, you know, all of those things in there, and that is why they were already looking at, so this is actually a good timing.
If we're gonna review the ordinance.
Exactly.
The bylaws.
Exactly.
At one time.
Right.
And make sure it's consistent. Then we can update the website, we can update the literature.
But I get my, you know, my question is, we have other boards that have bylaws, so why are we reinventing the wheel when it comes to that? My question, it comes to the bylaws, because I know you guys have worked on that for a while, so. Maybe at the planning commission, board review, D E A. I mean, they, there's city bylaws that we adhere to, that are those boards adhere to, so why do we have to reinvent the wheel and have a whole separate set of bylaws? That's one of the questions that. Mission Passberry and I talked to the board chair the day after a meeting last week, and you know, and I, I was very honest with her, and then she was in agreement, you know. Unless there's business pretend to, there's no reason to meet. You know, so, you know, unless it's clear goals and objectives, there has to be, um, set by the city commission. You know, you know, when it comes to not telling them what their goals are, but giving them clear direction on what we want. If there's no business to be taken, then there should be no meeting, you know, and, and then she was under the understanding that she had adhered to her, to the bylaws, which is what? Once a month, or, even though they don't, they don't meet in December usually, right?
Eleven times a year, yeah.
Right, you know, and, and I, I, I just want to have a plan next meeting. I don't want to come in here and just be. You know, going back and forth, you know, it's gotta be some kind of goals and what we're trying to achieve, you know, with that board, and, and. Um, I love the idea of us working together and you can come up with a plan, but you know, my thing is, if there's not business to be taking, then there shouldn't be a meeting. You know, and so, um, that's just my thought.
I agree, and, and, um, one of the things I was just mentioning in passing at, at your last meeting. Um, the historic district is mission is a perfect example. They post a, a notice at the beginning of the year and say, we're gonna meet on these dates, if there's anything to talk about, but if there's not, we won't meet. The frustration there is, they never tell you when, when they're gonna meet, when they're not gonna meet. So if there's a way to, to historic.
It means that some of our fields are the same thing, and, but they meet because somebody needs them to. Address the business.
Right.
Right, they don't meet for their own.
Right.
identification.
Right, but my, I guess my question is, how does the public know that all of a sudden, we haven't met for six months, but we've got a meeting this week?
Yeah, I, I mean, the public knows if they are interested in the item, right, and so. You would otherwise have to. All the people who are interested in the right. It'll be. And history, or if it's on a more appeals, it'll be a request for a variance. For a specific piece of property, and likewise, as twice other appeals, a notice that goes to all the properties. Or adjacent to that property, you know, that that hearing was.
Okay, just for argument's sake, I said you've got two commissioners who live in the district. And I, if there's something going on in the district, I'd like to know about it, whether I'm personally involved or not, because what they go in there and ask for. Many times there's a collar, chimney, or replacement windows, that kind of stuff. And I don't know whether Commissioner, um, puts his face, Jim. I don't know whether, duh.
I think one would assume that they were going to have a meeting, if they post what their meeting schedule is for the year, I think one would assume they were gonna have a meeting. On those dates, and then you go and check to be sure that it wasn't canceled because nothing's coming up.
The other thing a member of the public can do is subscribe to.
That's probably the best way.
If you're interested, that's the best thing, whatever annual subscription, I mean, if you want to get anything, any business, the way they'll do that.
You know, and back to the H R C, so you know, I, you know, they, you know, they have, they have done a lot of great, good things, but I think that from what I've been involved in watching is that. It's two hours of just conversation and no action, you know, and that's where I want to get, you know, I'm here. Every first of the third Monday, do the city's business, and I go home, and you know, and, and if there's no business to be done, then I don't know, understand, you know, why. Staff would have to come, you know, do the Zoom, this and that. No, if it's not, that there's, there, there's a definitive plan, that's one thing, you know, and, but. If there's no business or no action to be taken, then I don't, and we did communicate that with the chair, and she was in a hundred percent agreement with that, you know, with it, so. Um, I just want to have a plan for, you know, two weeks when we come back, to make sure that we are, you know, on the same page, and, and. You know, there's a cut comment and public comment last meeting about, you know. They don't want us to set expectations and, and, and what we want, but again, it's our job as elected body of city meetings to do so. So, um, I just want a plan more so about how we're gonna attack this next week.
Perhaps you could have an outline. Yeah, with that, what the topics we want to cover and all I want to say.
I think we could be a positive assistance.
Absolutely.
Sure. We just need to be adding. Advice and, and help and assistance. In a very positive way. Thanks, Jim.
Commissioner Larry, sorry. See, I take a week off and that's what happened.
Yeah. I don't have anything else to add. Uh, none of the commissioners do.
Alright, at this time, we will begin public comment. We will begin inside the chambers first. Just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address.
Hi, we're King Ramon. So just the couple of things I would like to, um, point out. So with the H R C bylaw, part of the issue is we've literally copied and pasted from another board. So we have things like authority, things saying that we're supposed to, uh, keep an eye on downtown and stuff like this, that are not with the H R C. That isn't anything to do with us, and also that's where we get the twelve meetings a year from. Which again, before any of us, and this is what happens, we just copy and paste something. So yes, I, uh, have been taking the lead on painting that and trying to make some that makes over more sense, but also, uh. Need a little bit of guidance on what makes sense, so that's why it has taken a little bit, and. Of course, as you know, I do a lot of things in the community, so there's always a time I can put on just that specific thing. And, uh, also on the mentality of engaging in conversation with the H R C. I can speak for all of us that we do want some input, we do want some healthy conversation. We do want to try to come together and make something more successful. But on that note, wording doesn't matter. It should be more positive assistance as Commissioner Miller mentioned. And less like an attack, like hell set. I know that this might seem a little penitent, but it doesn't matter what you're coming into a conversation with. If we're already looking at being a little bit more aggressive, that might not be the healthiest. If we're already, let me just come together and help each other and make something more successful, that might be a little healthier. So I hope you all keep that in mind, and that you do reach out to some of the H R C members to. Get some preliminary conversations. Because we're all doing our best, and we're, I'm gonna say less than I can give you all. So, I look forward to that conversation. I look forward to seeing us all make some progress here. And. Other than that, I do want to, uh, bop back to the, uh, full and special events. I do agree with Commissioner Gao, so there should be some look at the, the percentage of. I do agree with Commissioner Gausel, there should be some look at the percentage of more consistent over resident and non-resident. And I think those could be some good part of that. Despite more, I kind of, I don't know, but I think that's good.
Something to remember, eleven eighty, Glendale and Adrian, about the parks and various things being closed. As a person who wouldn't be doing trail ride competition, I think if it does have grandchildren, it would be nice to have a sign saying upcoming will be, you know, this was very important. Um, and I talked to Jeremiah because she was leaving. And he said there was something that had been proposed, but was kicked out, maybe because of expense or something like that. I think it still needs to be done though, so that people will know, even the few hours of it. And when next week that trail will be closed, that kind of thing.
Excellent. Hearing no more public comment inside the city chambers, we will now open it up to Zoom participants. And just to remind you, there is a three minute time limit. You will hear the alarm go off if you bypass the three minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Ashley Cavasos Frank, uh, City of Adrian resident. Uh, first of all, if there are humans in the city, there will always be business for the HRC to attend to. Um, second, uh, Nazis don't just hate people of Jewish descent. White supremacists don't just hate people of color. When we are talking about making bad guys uncomfortable, which I've heard a couple of times in this meeting regarding crime. We need to make sure that we are including hate crime and all types of crime, not just um, not just war on drugs. Um, things a municipality can do to help beyond barricade, which is something that you guys keep coming back to as the only solution to protect marginalized communities. Uh, you have opportunities to provide support and protections in the community. Um, are you, is there a plan to revisit the proposed hate imagery ordinances and representation flag ordinances that were uh, proposed to you by the HRC in one of those, you know, completely useless meetings you guys keep talking about? Um, the pride flag raising is more than just a group of people wanting to feel special. It's a statement by the communities that fly them, like Livonia, Detroit, Muskegon, Ferndale, Celine, Oakland County Executive Building flies one over their entire building. Uh, you have a month to find a way to make amends with an already targeted and hurting population in your city. In two thousand twenty-one, hate crime incidents reported increased by eleven point six percent in a year. Incidents with an LGBTQIA plus bias accounted for nineteen point four percent of those hate crimes. Suicide is the second leading cause of death among young people aged ten to twenty-four. LGBTQ youth are more than four times likely to attempt suicide than their straight peers. The Trevor Project estimates that more than one point four million LGBTQ plus youth thirteen to twenty-four seriously consider suicide each year and at least one attempt suicide every forty-five seconds. So think about how long this meeting has been and calculate every forty-five seconds. The Trevor Project is a national is a national organization and I'll be sending you the link so you can see this information for yourself. Um, the first two statistics were from the Department of Justice, an FBI um, partnership webinar that I attended a couple of weeks ago. Um, a calculated hate crime took place just outside of that building. Uh, the man arrested in Texas for threatening to kill all Jews in Michigan legislature, that's a quote, lives in Laneway County and what has direct ties to Adrian. I know firsthand that he was recruiting Adrian residents to be a part of.
Time is out, thank you. Hearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Oh, yeah. You want to adjourn? You want to adjourn?
And meeting will, our regular meeting will begin at seven PM inside. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hell.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gaus.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion?
I make a motion to move uh, CR two, three dash zero, four, four police to the regular agenda.
So may I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Oh.
With the removal of CR twenty-three dash zero, four, four?
Support. Motion or support?
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Consent consent agenda items approved with removal of CR dash zero, four, four from the police department to the regular agenda is approved by a seven, zero vote.
Before we begin the regular agenda, I need a motion to amend the regular agenda as there is a typo for special order dash three. It needs to read public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the adoption of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-four Budget and General Appropriations Act. May I get a motion to amend the agenda to read special order three with fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yeah.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Motion to amend the agenda to change special order three, public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four Budget and General Appropriations Act as approved by a seven, zero vote.
Moving on to our regular, oh, yes.
Um, we've got a typo, we want to get back to the uh, the service agreement, is this the time for them to just directly mean to type up in?
From from inside of the consent agenda, then you mean?
I think it's it's the maintenance.
Oh, that one down there. That would be when we get to that resolution, you would make that amendment at that point. Yep, thank you. Yes. No, it's right here, that's right, this, oh, it is on the consent agenda, yes, that's what I was thinking.
You can, I. Commissioner, I think you can just let me know what the typo was and we can fix it before execution.
Okay. Moving on to our ordinances, ordinance twenty-three dash zero, zero, three is a second reading and consideration of an amendment to section eighty-two point three, three of chapter eighty-two of the Adrian City Code, Riverview Terrace Housing Development. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Support.
Are there any public comments pertaining to this ordinance? Hearing no public comments, are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaus.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hell.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted by a seven, zero vote.
Moving on to special orders. Number one, special order dash one is a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the special assessment role for delinquent rental property registration, inspection fees, parking assessments, improvements or abatements of public hazards on single lots in the city of Adrian and other miscellaneous invoices. I now call the public hearing to order and if anyone has any comments regarding this, you may approach the podium. And just please state your name and address, thank you.
Hello, my name is Elliot Buer and this is a code or an ordinance for snow removal. That um, it on uh, January eighteenth, twenty-two, nine, twenty twenty-two, snow was removed from my sidewalk in the front of my house. Would this pertain to what we were talking about as far as um, codes and uh, I'm not familiar, so. Ordinance, it's an ordinance to have your your snow off your sidewalk. Is it?
Hmm.
Okay, the snow was removed from my sidewalk. Um, it, we got a skiff of snow, maybe two inches. I was out at eight thirty the night before removing snow from my sidewalk and salting. I had been, I had to leave because I had a construction job somewhere, came back. My front yard was tore up, I have the pictures. Um, nobody else's snow was off of their sidewalk. My next door neighbor directly next to me called and said she had fallen and then she told me she never fell. Um, I'm being charged two hundred and forty-seven dollars for snow removal. It cost me almost nine hundred dollars doing it myself from the snow, from the blade that cut both sides of my sidewalk, cut all the lawn up and everything, pushed the lawn up into this, into my yard. And I had to fix all the gouges that the blade had done. I'm getting charged for that. How do I go about um, doing, I'm not going to pay for it? From the damage that that was done, I have pictures. I have pictures from the damage that was done, not only that, but from my neighbor lying because she doesn't like me.
We can't comment back to you right now, this is just your your comment time, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you give your address one more time though, please?
Thank you. One, one, three, five Vine Street, thank you.
Hello, my name's Dane Nelson, I'm on here on behalf of the First Presbyterian Church right across the street. Uh, if I could approach the clerk, I have a written protest. Uh, I'm here tonight really to discuss the downtown uh, trash collection ordinance and the attempt to charge our church uh, some four hundred and, uh, I think it's four hundred and eighty dollars now with a ten percent uh, uh, if you will, unpaid fee, if you will. Um, the reason for our protest is that uh, a number of them, I I listed them all and I won't have time to go over them. But essentially, what happened, this was an ordinance that was adopted by the city in uh, June of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, af- and prior to that time, in I believe on February fourth, the uh, bids had gone out uh, for dumpsters downtown. So the bids were out even before your ordinance was adopted. So I think you knew what you were going to do ahead of time, obviously. And then in May of that year, uh, you had a pre-meeting and is indicated in the resolution approving the fees later on in June. Uh, I think the city engineer ended that the city commission had opted to charge every affected property the same amount of money downtown. Now, there was no vote, but you opted to do it. So I'm assuming you decided that back in in uh, the pre-meeting, which I have, obviously there was no vote taken, but that's what you did. And that's in the resolution indicating that. So in when June came along, the ordinance was adopted. I would indicate to you that uh, no notice was given to any, to the church, we knew nothing about it. Uh, we have our own dumpster, I have a contract for a dumpster. So I'm going to have to breach that if we go with yours and it's going, it's going to double the cost to the church. Instead of paying about four hundred dollars, we're going to be paying a thousand dollars a year for our trash pickup for a couple of bags a uh, uh, a week, if you will. Um, the um, once we have uh, received no notice, then they didn't bill us. And so we didn't know we could use a dumpster in the first place. And mind you, no dumpster was provided. Uh, the the closest dumpster for our eighty-year-old custod- custodian is on Main Street and we're over here. Uh, so we have no access to that. I contacted Commissioner Halt when I found out about this um, and said it's been six months since we got billed. We didn't know about the ordinance, even our billing says, sorry, we forgot to bill you. So we ended up, and now I'm trying to get charged uh, for a whole year when we even didn't even know about it for six months, let alone use it. So that's it, so everything else in my written protest, if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Hello, good evening, my name is Martin Manduano. My address is five, five, eight Dennis Street. I'm here because uh, trash pickup, they they charge me double, uh, double. Like I I bought a property, it's a duplex. But I've been telling to the, the guys from the city hall, they charmed me, charmed me double, the lady from Treasure. She said, uh, I don't have nothing to do, go with upstairs with Connie, I don't know her name. So she sent February twenty, somebody to check it out, um, see if uh, somebody's living next door. I said, no, I got only like uh, a state bunch of bag, a bicycle or or tools, something like that, but it's not renting, it's rented. So I would like to to pay only, you know, only one, one month for, not double, you want to see?
Sir, could you give us your address again? I didn't quite catch it.
It's five, five, eight Dennis Street.
Dennis, okay, thank you.
See if I do my favor.
Yeah, we can't comment back to you, but I, the city administrator will look into it, I gave him that.
She, they can send me another uh, estate bill or something like that, I appreciate it, thank you.
Hearing no more comments. I now call this public hearing closed. Moving on to special order.
Dash. Oh. Hello.
I will reopen the public hearing for special order one. Go ahead.
Hi, this is regarding um, two, two, four Toledo Street um, regarding snow removal. When we were on vacation, they came and removed our snow and gave me a bill of four hundred and forty-one dollars to do a L-shaped removal on my property. Now, I was in Florida for seven days and I had no control of what the weather was doing in the little town of Adrian when I'm in Florida and I get this bill. When I went to the city hall to complain about it six months ago, they just basically said, it's a bill, you got to pay it. So what do I need to do from here? I also.
We're not allowed to comment, we're not allowed to comment back to you right now, sorry.
Okay, I did. Okay, I did drop off today at least sixty pictures that were, when I got at home, and I honestly thought somebody, one of my friends or maybe a neighbor plowed my area. And, but when I got the letter, down on my street and all around town, people's property was not plowed. If it was, then they would have gotten a ticket. So you guys have, I dropped off at least forty pictures today of surrounding areas, businesses, commercial business, home properties all around my area, around Toledo Street, Main, Mami, Winter. So if you could please evaluate those pictures and my concern. Four-hundred-and-forty-one dollars for snow removal is quite ridiculous for a single mom of two small kids. Kind of ridiculous. Thank you for your time.
Are there any other comments for special order one on Zoom or in person?
Yeah, this is Lou Tellerico. I'm with Americans with Down Syndrome and Autism. We're located out of Garden City, Michigan, and we have a project on ten-sixteen Treat Street, and we're advised that we have a couple of invoices that are open from the city for grass cutting. I don't know, is this a time and a place to address this, or is this going to be on the, for, the format of the agenda that you guys are discussing? Or shall I just continue on at this point?
Go ahead.
Okay. In any event, our, one of our representatives by the name of Linda Martinez had informed Phil, or the building director over there, or building department on six-seven of twenty-two, that we would be responsible for maintaining, taking care of the property because it is kind of in a little bit of rough shape, to say the very least. As you know, it was a former drug house and crack, crack facility and manufacturing methamphetamines. In any event, we have a couple of issues here that obviously the formulation was put on note, or the inspectors were put on notice with regards to the cutting of the grass on, on six-seven of twenty-two. And then, and again, they went ahead and allegedly had cut the grass on six-fifteen of twenty-two for a hundred-and-sixty dollars. And then on seven-nineteen, I have an email from Mrs. Martinez, was her field operations director over there, and she had went by and, and took some photographs of the property on seven-nineteen, July nineteenth, and it shows that the grass had been cut and maintained. Then on seven-twenty-five, you guys sent us an invoice for cutting the grass of another hundred-and-sixty dollars. So what we did is we had asked for proof as to what had transpired there and taken place. We put a FOIA request in on February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, and to date, it has not been answered. I don't know what you guys are doing over there, what's, what's going on with your municipality, but you know, you got seven days to answer this thing, obviously, and it's well beyond the, the time statute. So that's where we're at with this. Obviously, we're objecting to these, and what we believe are fraudulent charges. We would ask for, like I said, evidence to provide, to be provided to us with regards to the actual height of the grass at the time in which it was allegedly cut. We have not seen that. We have not seen any notices of violation or anything of that nature whatsoever. So that's where we're at, and then I ask the board to take this into consideration, investigate this matter in its entirety. Thank you. Am I timed out?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I now call this hearing closed. Moving on to special order dash two, a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the special assessment role for delinquent water and sewer charges. I now call this public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter in person or on Zoom may do so at this time.
Hi there, I'm Roger Fox. I live on three-oh-two Riverside. I'm a union construction worker, and I'm not home lot, and I have roommates sometimes stay with me, and they've had water bills in their name. And somehow, you guys have sent me letters trying to get me to pay them. I've told you guys, they're not my name. I'm not going to pay them. And if I didn't show up today and waste my time, it was going to be almost a thousand dollars on my account that I don't owe. And everybody that puts their bill in their name, they have to show their ID. I'll pay my water bill if I owe it, but I don't owe that. That's for somebody else's credit and somebody else's bill. So that's why I'm here.
What's the address again?
Three-oh-two Riverside Avenue. Thank you, ma'am.
I now call this public hearing closed. Moving on to special order dash three, a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the adoption of the Fiscal Year two-thousand twenty-three dash twenty-four Budget and General Appropriations Act. I now call this hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak in person or on Zoom in regards to the fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four budget may do so at this time. I now call this public hearing closed. Moving on to our resolutions. Resolution R twenty-three dash zero-one-zero is from Finance. It is a resolution to approve and adopt the Fiscal Year two-thousand twenty-three dash twenty-four Budget and General Appropriations Act. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor.
Commissioner Haupt?
Just a couple of quick thoughts. I'd like to thank our department heads and our city administrator for, for bringing this budget before us. I've always said in the past that the, the budget is presented from the city administrator, but it's ultimately the city commission's budget to be held accountable for. Some of the highlights in the budget I really like is that we are prioritizing public safety. We are, we understand that, you know, in regards to fighting crime in the city, we put an emphasis on that. We've also put emphasis on our, our, our fire department by hiring three more firefighters. The ambulance service, when, uh, when we made that decision was a gamble when it comes to, would it be revenue neutral? Come to find out, it actually is in the black every year since we've opted into that. So again, I think that was a great decision, looking back at that. When the mayor, myself, and Commissioner Strayer sat in Blight Committee meetings for a year and a half, learning about how other communities fought blight, and again, I've been accused about talking about blight all the time. And, and for the record, I'm going to continue talking about it because that's how you bring it to the forefront and you get things done, is that the first thing they needed was political capital. And Commissioner Strayer can correct me if wrong, and that was the main component of it. Does your politicians or city commissioner council want to prioritize cleaning your city up? And I am proud to say that my colleagues and I have, have really done a really good job of, of investing in those particular departments to clean our city up. From trash totes with a lid to other things we talked about, whether it be point of sale or other policy decisions. The big one is, what do you do if you go into somebody's home and they don't have the means to clean up or fix their property? This budget reflects a quarter of a million dollars that will be accessible to people that cannot afford to do those repairs, to pay it back over time at a very, very, very low interest rate that they can afford. Again, that is putting political capital in the forefront of this. We, you know, because of our decisions we made in the past over the years, all new hires from a defined benefit to a defined contribution, making lump sum payments on our pension deficit, that's where the defined contribution, defined benefit, that's the only way you can bring that liability up. And with those decisions we made, we have an, you know, a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollar reduction in our pension costs for the twenty-three twenty-four season. I am very proud of the work we've done. There's a lot of work to be done when it comes to reducing the crime rate, but also reducing blight. But I am very happy and pleased with this budget. I think a lot of hard work was put in it, and I just want to say I appreciate the hard work the staff put into this.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Strayer and Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Haupt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-three dash zero-eleven is from Finance. It is a resolution to approve an amendment to language in the city's standard professional services contract. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments pertaining to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Haupt. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Haupt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-three dash zero forty-four is from Police. It is a resolution to approve the employment of Colin Castleberry. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any public comments pertaining to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer. Oh, sorry. I have a motion from Commissioner Haupt with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Haupt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Epstein.
Resolution adopted by a six yes, one abstention vote.
Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those? Moving on, at this time, we will open it up for general public comment. We will first begin inside the city chambers, and after all participants that want to speak inside the chambers have spoken, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. You will see the three-minute timeout displayed on the screen, and for the record, please state your name and address.
Hello, long time no see. I'm Akeem Ramos Stoll, and I just have a couple of quick things to say. One, I do want to echo that I am glad that you guys are doing the small loans, and I think that can be a great asset to helping deal with blight to our city, but also to help people not be so harshly impacted by it and to help all of our citizens get a little better and have a little better community. I also want to mention the homeownership seminar that's coming up next month on the tenth. I had changed a few things due to some hindrances, but I am still making this happen because that's what I do. So I hope some of you will come see it, and it's a great program. It's literally what got me off of the streets and in a house. So I'm happy to shout it from the rooftops. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Ben Semer, Chief of Police for the City of Adrian. First of all, thank you for your support, both our endeavor agreement with Flock, also the hiring of Mr. Castleberry, fourth generation, serves the City of Adrian, really looking forward to his career. Wanted to give a sixty-second update. Last week was our first for directed patrol based on some data that we'd put together, issues, areas where we're having trouble. So on two days last week, we added an officer for one shift, so eight hours a day, twice. And in those shifts, that one car made eleven felony arrests, six misdemeanor arrests, one parole violation, four vehicles impounded, and six firearms seized. So just by adding one car and not subjecting them to the regular calls for service, you know, we have our regular complement of officers who are out doing those things, this person was free to just pursue those hotspots where we've been having trouble, and that's, that's what we've turned up in just one, one week with two days extra. So we definitely intend to continue that throughout the summer with your permission. I'm going to be approaching you for a little flexibility in our overtime budget to that end, but certainly, we're going to see some results. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment inside the chambers. At this time, we will now open it up to Zoom participants. You will also see the time on your screen, and please state your name and address as well if you wish to participate in public comment.
Ashley Cavassos-Frank, City of Adrian resident. Just to finish my thoughts from earlier, I would like to remind all members of the community in the room, present on Zoom, and those that will watch this recording at a later time, that this is an election year. If you are a member of the marginalized community and you do not see yourself represented by the body and the people in front of you, vote for someone who does. You have options this year. Pay attention to his, who isn't standing up for you, your community, and vote. Pay attention to what commissioners are actively trying to dismantle, the one commission that represents the city directly. Local government is who is supposed to protect and support the most vulnerable of us, and currently, the city commission is doing the exact opposite. I would also like to send out a thank you to Chief Emmerich, who is continually reliable and is actively working to make the city better, and it shows. Thank you for your work.
We do have another public comment inside the chambers, and you have not spoken yet in this public comment period, so you may do so.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Dane Nelson. I just wanted to finish my comments real briefly. In the ordinance itself is adopted for the downtown collection. It does indicate that, and I'll read it, says refuse collection enclosures shall be made available. It doesn't say you have to use them within the municipal lots, within the four blocks of downtown surrounding the intersection of Main Street and Mami Street, and it says only for the use of businesses and residents. The church isn't a business. Your ordinance doesn't define businesses to be a church. I think we're the only church that you're trying to be assessing, and so I think any straight language on the ordinance, we don't, we, we, we're not there. It's a church, it's not a business, not a residence. That's the only thing the dumpsters are available for. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.